Good morning, folks. Invocation this morning by Supervisor Dave Rogers. Pledge of Allegion by my friend Supervisor Mr. Wheeler.
Let's all stand. Heavenly Father, this is a day which you have made and we will rejoice and be glad in it. We thank you for the beauty that's all about us, for the rain that's poured upon our ground, which will provide sustenance for years to come. We continue to thank you for that rain that brings prosperity. We need it so much and we're so grateful. We thank you for your love, your mercy, and your peace which you pour out upon us. For the community members and friends that are together here this morning, we pray your blessings upon our deliberation. May we use your wisdom and your truth and your justice to be the kind of people we need to be. We thank you for our country, for the young men and women who have stood on foreign fields of battle, who watch the wall of freedom that we might not be overcome by those who would take away our liberties. We pray your blessings upon them. May they know that they're loved at home and may we care for their needs, Lord, as you show us the best way to do that. We ask your blessings upon this day and we ask these favors in Jesus' name. Amen.
Let's salute our great American flag, pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Before Ida Frazier, remember something?
Yeah, I would just like to open and close this meeting. Over the weekend, the Rancho's lost a very special little boy, Luis Lopez. As he was sleeping in his bed, a truck was going at very high speeds, ran into a propane tank and sent it airborne into his bedroom and killed him and broke his brother's leg. The Rancho's family mourns for Luis Lopez and their family who've dealt with considerable loss over the years. And so I would just like to open and close in the memorance of Luis Lopez today.
Supervisor Wheeler?
Yes, I would like to honor Mrs. Darnell, Mr. Don Darnell's wife. He was a past supervisor for District 5 and she passed away this last weekend. A great lady, stayed involved even after Don had died and the whole community up there and very, very active, very great lady. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wheeler.
Public comment. The first fifteen minutes of each regular session is set aside for members of the public to comment on any item within the jurisdiction of the board but not appearing on the agenda. Items presented under public comment may not be discussed or acted upon by the board at this time. For items appearing on the agenda, the public is invited to comment at the time the item is called for consideration by the board. Any person addressing the board under public comment will be limited to a three-minute presentation to ensure that all interested parties have an opportunity to speak. Any handouts to the board must be submitted to the Chief Clerk of the Board for distribution to the supervisors. Anyone addressing the board is asked to print their name clearly on the speaker sheet at the podium. Also, our persons addressing the board may state their name and county residence for the record.
I got one.
Mr. Wheeler?
We got a little bit of rain last night, 1.47 hundreds in Norfolk, almost an inch and a half, so it was really nice, so keep it coming.
We have no speakers and we'll follow.
Today, the Board of Supervisors has considered an action to censor the district attorney for serious workplace misconduct. It was shocking to learn the level at which the district attorney subject his employees to racist and sexist comments and otherwise inappropriate conduct. The district attorney has denied acting in this manner, but the evidence resulted from the investigation overwhelmingly proved otherwise. Statements made by the district attorney to the media about criminal investigations of members of this board are simply untrue. The chief investigator overseeing all investigations within the district attorney's office has confirmed that there has been no investigation of Supervisor Rogers. One complaint regarding Supervisor Frazier has been investigated and concluded that there was no wrongdoing. The Board of Supervisors is obligated to protect employees and make sure that they come to work each day without fear of being harassed or discriminated against. The district attorney was asked to resign, but he has chosen not to do so. Therefore, the board called on him to immediately stop acting inappropriately. He has a responsibility to the employees in the district attorney's office and the citizens of Madera County to not engage in such misconduct. He must also not retaliate against anyone who has come forward and provided information during the investigation. Our hope is to move forward from this unfortunate circumstances and continue as a board to uphold the law and our policy against workplace discrimination, harassment, and abuse. Now, our county council has additional information.
Thank you, Chairman. Good morning, members of the board. Regina Garza, your county counsel. The Madera County Board of Supervisors was recently made aware of allegations of serious workplace misconduct made against District Attorney David Lynn. A complaint against District Attorney Lynn alleges that he has engaged in harassing and abusive conduct towards his department's employees. The county retained an outside law firm to conduct an independent investigation into the allegations. That investigation was recently concluded and the board was presented with the investigators' findings as a result of threatened litigation. In sum, the investigator found sufficient evidence to sustain the allegations that the district attorney made racist, sexist, lewd, and offensive comments toward his department's employees and that he generally made abusive, threatening, and profane comments towards numerous employees throughout the district attorney's office. Investigator Kimberly Horuichi is present today and will provide an overview of her facts and findings. Because the district attorney is an elected official and not appointed by the board, the board does not have authority to discipline the district attorney as it does with appointed county officials. One of the options available to the board is to publicly denounce the actions of the district attorney, approve a resolution censoring him for his misconduct, demand that he cease and desist all harassing discriminatory and abusive conduct toward employees, and not retaliate against any department employee who may come forward with allegations against him or who otherwise cooperated in the investigations into the allegations against him. A resolution of censor is a legislative act of the board and, as such, must be discussed and approved by the board in open session. As with any such legislative act, any member of the public is allowed to have an opportunity to comment on the proposed resolution to censor District Attorney Lynn before the board considers action on the resolution. The censor is not disciplinary and involves no deprivation of life, liberty, or property interest. It is not a quasi-judicial proceeding requiring a hearing or a formal legal finding. As such, it does not contemplate or allow for introduction of evidence or testimony other than public comment. The hearing and evidentiary procedure set forth in paragraph 5 subdivision B, 3 of the county's policy and guidelines on discrimination and harassment do not apply to a censure of an elected department head. Also, the Brown Act prohibits the Board of Supervisors from meeting in closed session to discuss the job performance or salaries of county-elected officers. So today's meeting and the board's consideration of a censor resolution is legally authorized. We have made some revisions to the original censor resolution that's on the county's website. There will be some copies here for members of the public in front of the clerk of the board. Among the edits to the original censor resolutions includes adding language that demands the district attorney refrain from retaliating against any of his staff or any county employees or official as a result of the investigation and the censor. As part of the consideration of the censor resolution, the board may also discuss and decide to authorize the release of a redacted version of the investigation report. We have prepared a second alternative version of the censor resolution. That will also be available to the public here. The Board of Supervisors should carefully consider this decision, and if disclosure is desired, the Board of Supervisors must waive any attorney-client privilege with respect to the redacted investigator's report and authorize disclosure and release limited to only the redacted investigator's report. The alternative resolution includes provisions that I'll read. On page two, the third whereas, and you should have that in front of you supervisors, the paragraph to distinguish it from the original censure reads, "Whereas, given Mr. Lynn's position as an elected district attorney, the nature of the allegations, and the thoroughness of the independent and professional investigation conducted, the public has an interest in disclosure of the investigator's report, subject to redacting identifying information of employees in the district attorney's office, other employees, and victims." As you move down the page, there's an additional paragraph that says, "Be it further resolved, given the public's interest in the disclosure of the investigator's report, subject to appropriate redactions, and the public's interest in transparency with regard to elected officials, the board waives any attorney-client privilege with respect to the redacted investigator's report and authorizes the public release of the redacted investigator's report, a copy of which shall be attached here, too." The alternate resolution attempts to balance the public interest in disclosure of the investigator's report against any chilling effect the release might have on the employee complaint process, including employee participation in the investigation process. For that reason, we have redacted names, job titles, and any sentence or sequence of sentences that may identify those who participated in the investigation. The redactions also include a segment of the complaint that does not pertain to the district attorney. Before some final comments in closing the staff presentation on this item, Kim, the investigator, will come to the microphone and provide an overview of the findings.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and members. For the record, my name is Kimberly A. Horuichi. I'm an attorney with the law firm of Liebert Cassidy Whitmore in the Fresno office. I was retained in approximately July of this year to conduct a neutral, independent investigation of allegations that were raised in regards to Mr. Lynn's conduct. I spoke to approximately ten to twelve witnesses, in addition to other relevant people who had information necessary to the outcome of the investigation before making my findings. I will now briefly summarize what the scope of investigation was as well as what the findings were as laid out in the investigation report. The scope of the investigation was threefold. First was whether or not District Attorney Lynn made repeated sexist or sexually explicit comments about female employees and, in one case, a female crime victim. The second was whether District Attorney Lynn made repeated racist or racially insensitive comments in the workplace. And the third was whether District Attorney Lynn engaged in abusive or threatening conduct in the workplace. At the conclusion of my investigation, which is based on a preponderance of the evidence, meaning it is more likely than not, first, that District Attorney Lynn engaged in sexist and sexually explicit comments to and about employees and, in one case, a female crime victim, that allegation is sustained. The second is that District Attorney Lynn engaged in racist or racially insensitive comments in the workplace, that allegation was sustained. And third, that District Attorney Lynn engaged in abusive or threatening conduct in the workplace, that allegation was sustained. As it pertained to each of the allegations, some of the specific remarks I think are worth noting, and I will place them in the record now as they were stated. Please let me advise those listening or watching today's presentation, some of this language is extremely offensive and includes profanity. I apologize in advance for any offense to the decorum of this great body, but I think it's important that we state the accurate language. So in most cases, I will use the actual sentences that were provided to me by the witnesses. As to the first allegation that Mr. Lynn engaged in sexist or sexually explicit comments, comments included, in one instance, having a desire to bounce a quarter off a female district attorney's ass, finding one female district attorney so attractive that he would, quote, "eat a mile of her shit just to see where it came out of," suggesting that another female district attorney sit on his face, referring to one female district attorney as "good-looking girl" rather than referring to her by her name, smacking his lips and making a delighted sound every time a female district attorney walked past, and in one case, suggesting that a female crime victim dressed more suggestively or provocatively before meeting with him and making other inappropriate comments in regards to her case, which was sexual in nature. As it pertains to the allegation that Mr. Lynn engaged in racist or racially insensitive comments, that allegation was sustained and the language included use of the N-word, use of the term, forgive me, wetback and spic, making comments in regards to Native Americans or Indians, as he put them, suggesting that all they care about is that if somebody takes away their beer and, quote, "fuck them," they don't vote. In one instance, a witness reported the following statement from Mr. Lynn. After the Trump election, he made a joke about going to a slave auction in Baltimore, and at the auction, they had already determined that Michelle Obama was going to be the field N-word because of her broad shoulders and arms, but they were deciding whether Barry, i.e. Barack Obama, was going to be a house N or a field N. He also made comments in regards to the use of an impossibility defense as it pertained to an African-American DUI defendant because African-Americans, quote, "lips will explode above a certain altitude," so they should just argue that it was impossible to be at that place on the mountain. Finally, in relationship to abusive conduct or threatening conduct in the workplace, as I stated, that allegation was sustained, comments included making a remark about one employee's ill relative saying, and I quote, "I wish that fucker would just die already," kicking trash cans, yelling at employees, using profanity at employees, referring to one deputy district attorney as, quote, "a piece of shit" and saying, "Fuck you, fat boy." So as it pertained to the investigation that I undertook, again, it was a neutral, independent investigation where I spoke to numerous witnesses, marshaled all the evidence, and made findings. Based on that, I made the findings of the sustained allegations. And now, Ms. Garza.
Thank you, Kim. Members of the board and chairman. To summarize, there are two resolutions before you today to censor District Attorney Lynn. The original censor resolution has been revised a bit to include retaliation language. The alternate censor resolution authorizes the release of a redacted version of the investigation report. If the board supervisor wishes to waive the attorney-client privilege, an affirmative vote is required for that, and the waiver and authorized disclosure should be limited only to the redacted investigator's report. So, thank you, and I'm available for any questions.
How do we refer or reference the alternate versus the original? Alternate and original?
Yeah, I think those terms would be fine.
On the handouts, we identified them as the new original and then the alternate.
Okay.
At this point, we'll open it up to the public.
My name is David. Is this on? My name is David Lynn.
My name is David Lynn. I am the district attorney of Madera County, California. I live in Oakhurst, California. I assume I have the same right at this hearing as any member of the public. I don't know if my time is limited or not, but I'm being told by county council that my time is not limited. Are we prepared to go forward with the hearing that I requested then, counsel? There is no hearing, even though it is provided for in the rules of and the codes of Madera County, but that doesn't surprise me. I'd like to welcome the members of the audience to a political meeting, which is exactly what this meeting is. There was one complaint filed against me by a disgruntled employee. That employee had done similar actions in two other counties and filed similar complaints. Evidently, nobody seems to care about that or what occurred in those instances. Not only did he file a complaint with the Madera County Human Relations Department, but he also filed a complaint with the federal government, the Equal Employment Opportunity Commission. We haven't heard anything about that. It should be noted, and we will provide after this hearing at my press conference, copies of the immediate denial of his complaint, which came down within one week of the time that he filed his complaint. I don't even know if the Board of Supervisors are aware of that, and I really don't know if they really care about that, because this meeting is not about what I did. This meeting is about political retribution. I took office with a pledge to the people and the citizens of Madera County to be open, to be transparent, and to clean up Madera County. And I think the vast majority of the citizens of this county are aware that that is exactly what I am doing. Yes, there are two members of the Board of Supervisors under investigation, and the quote from the chief investigator, counsel failed to mention the fact that the chief investigator has just been cleared of corruption charges. Actually, in fact, he has not been cleared of disciplinary charges because he's yet to sign the agreement letter. So stating that he makes the decision and that he, in fact, can say these investigations are over or were unfounded is absolutely a fallacy. The district attorneys, the lawyers run the district attorney's office, not the hired investigators. Let me try to shorten things up. You've called for my resignation. That will not happen. Absolutely will not happen. You'd like to fire me, but there's a reason why you can't fire me, because I don't work for you. I work for the citizens of Madera County. And that's the way the California Constitution reads. I am here to prosecute criminal activity, whether I find that criminal activity in the ghettos of Madera or the hills of eastern Madera County or sitting in the board chambers of the Madera County Board of Supervisors, and I will prosecute that criminal activity. We do have two ongoing criminal cases. I will continue to prosecute those cases with extreme vigor over the remainder of this term and what I believe will be my next term. So, gentlemen, you're not off the hook yet. We're here today not because of anything that I have done other than doing my job. We're here today because you gentlemen are afraid, because you know what you have been doing and the way you have been running this county for all the years that you've been in power. What we're talking about are developers, many of them from Fresno County, cutting up our county. We're talking about supervisors who have absolutely no interest in representing their constituents. It's all about lining their pockets and making their retirements comfortable. And if you watch the actions of this board, you can clearly see that it's far from transparent. Ninety percent of his, it's, and I see Supervisor Rogers nodding his head. Supervisor Rogers, I have a clear-cut case against you for violation of the Fair Political Practices Act.
Go for it.
You will find it over in the courthouse.
Go for it.
And I am going for it, and I'm not going to get into a personal argument with you.
Neither am I.
So that's what this meeting is all about. Call me old-fashioned, call me a little old man. Call me the slur names that you have used against me as little Napoleon all these years, but I haven't done anything wrong, and I deny the allegations. I don't believe you gentlemen, in good faith and in good conscience, can deny the allegations. When we have supervisors on tape using profanity from the dais, check the archives. We have supervisors grabbing me physically and holding me. Many of you have witnessed that. We have supervisors who are lining their pockets with campaign contributions, and God only knows where they're going. And we have supervisors who are getting extremely good deals from people who work very closely with the county and the developers and many agencies with, I'm sorry, many contractors within Madera County, who benefit from your tax dollars and my tax dollars. And I am tired of paying for corruption. And that's what these five gentlemen want us to continue to do. It's kind of ironic in a sense. Madera County started with a criminal act. That is, when they split away from Fresno County over 100 years ago, somebody called in a false alarm so that all the good people in Fresno that were firemen left the meeting, and a secret vote was taken, not unlike what these gentlemen are used to, was taken to create Madera County. And now, we have a ever-changing investigation against me in which we have asked for a public hearing. But no, they don't want to do that. They don't want the facts to come out. But we, as citizens of Madera County, have a right to that public hearing, and I am going to fight for that right until my last living day, because I fought for this country, I fought for the Constitution, and that's obviously a document that these gentlemen have absolutely no interest in. It's not all about you guys, it's about the people. Thank you for putting on your show this morning.
Dale Drosen, currently a Fresno County resident. I am a long-term Madera resident before I moved down to Fresno. I've been watching this board for a long time. I'm not going to try and address any of the charges either direction. It's way above my pay grade, and it'll work out before the election. What I am concerned about, this board obviously has the legal right to do what you're talking about doing today. Now, whether you have the moral standing to do it, I don't agree with. I believe this board has authorized tens of thousands of dollars to settle sexual harassment claims of this type or hostile workplace environment claims to silence the victims and let the perpetrators go on. In one case, the perpetrator is annually lavished with praise at many of the meetings, along with many very high raises. So I don't understand why, in this case, you stand up and ask for his resignation, but where you actually had the power to end the employment, you didn't do it. Thank you.
Is there anybody else who wants to speak? Supervisor Rogers?
Yes, thank you.
Wait a minute.
My name is Carmen Claus. I'm Mexican, and I know this gentleman. He's a very nice man. He's never, didn't erase his thing against me. And, you know, it's sad what they're doing to him, because he's a good person. I know his beautiful wife. They're nice people, and me, as a Mexican, you know, you're saying that he's a racist. He don't have a bone of racist in his body. You know, you guys are all men. You guys say nasty things about everybody. Why it's so hard now that you guys are scared just because they say pussy or whatever? You know, you all say that, and it's just sad.
Thank you. You know, I'm not opposed to the DA being the DA, performing his job as a DA. He has the right to investigate crime and to prosecute it wherever he finds it. That's not why we're here today. It's easy to talk about things in light of what one believes, what one thinks, what one perceives, but what we have to base our information on is truth and fact, and that's all. We are here today because of the actions of the DA which led to a complaint by an employee. I don't care about the employees' complaints in other counties. I care about the complaint in this county. I don't care about whether or not those complaints in the other county were sustained. I care about the complaint that arose in this county under the employees that were under my responsibility and protection under this board, protection. We have a legal and a moral obligation to our employees to protect them from the kind of behavior exhibited by the DA. We have a legal and moral obligation to make sure that they can work in an environment that's free of sexual harassment, of racist comments, of intimidation and threat. I have deep sympathy for employees, for our employees, in this circumstance and in this regard, because I've experienced those same kind of things myself in my younger years. I know what it's like to have to work in that kind of environment. I had three children and continually lived in fear of losing my job or being threatened or harassed because of, for whatever reason, because I wasn't liked or whatever it was, I don't know. But people shouldn't have to live and work under those kinds of circumstances. That's the bottom line. This is about protecting our employees, period. No other thing. I find it interesting, the timing of all the allegations towards myself and Supervisor Frazier. I never knew I was under investigation, and that's fine. My life has been an open book since I've been in office. All of my paperwork is filed. You can see whatever you want to see about what I've done politically right there in the elections clerk's office. It's available. So my life is an open book. But again, this is not about me or this board. We didn't come here because we wanted to. We just decided to, all of a sudden. This is based on the allegations of an employee, and they were substantiated by more than one person, by multiple people. So we're not contriving anything here. We're not against the DA. We're not, we don't hate the DA. It's about his actions, and these actions have consequences. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Supervisor Frazier?
Yes, what's before us here is, it is about the people, right? The people's right to know exactly what someone is doing in political office. Okay, so this, as a censure, all that means is a formal denunciation of the actions, and with this to allow the report to come out, you can draw your own conclusions from it. We don't have to draw your conclusions from it. We don't hire or fire the DA, and we shouldn't. You hire and fire the DA, and you should have all of the information available to you to do that. In regards to the allegations brought forth by the DA regarding me, I will look you dead in your eye while you came to me and told me there is nothing to the investigation. Come to my office next week, and we'll close it out. You knew you were under investigation. You were trying to hold whatever you could over anybody's head. If you didn't know you were under investigation, why would you bring a lawyer to the meeting? You said it in front of other people that there was nothing to the claims. Those claims came to you from another developer that brought those to your attention at your fundraiser. So who's lining their pockets from the Fresno developers? This is about the people, the people's right to know what is going on and who that person is. We're not perfect people. No one in this room is. Myself, the most. But I welcome you to understand who I am and talk to me. Some politicians will tell you something and get on the stump and give you a speech about it's about the people, while all along, they are just telling you to look in the other direction, don't worry about the man behind the curtain.
Any other board member want to speak?
I'd like to corroborate one thing that was said by--
Senator Barr?
Thank you. Supervisor Frazier is exactly right. I stood maybe three or four feet from that very spot. I was on the other side when the DA's investigator, person in charge of investigating him, was telling him that we found nothing, and I'm here to finalize this this morning. Well, then, now that's changed, and, you know, it's interesting, the timing of the change. If you look at the DA's statements in the paper, they've evolved. First, we're under investigation according to the allegation in the Sierra Online paper. First, we're under investigation, investigation I never heard of. And now, we're being prosecuted, and we're going to be prosecuted for wrongdoing. And I've never been questioned, never a single question. I don't know what's going on. I don't know what the charge would be, but I don't care. My life has been an open book. This is not about us. Don't let the tail wag the dog. This is about taking the eyes off of what this person has done, trying to get them on other people. And, you know, if I was under investigation and I knew it, the last person I'd want to tick off would be the DA, if I was under investigation and knew it. And if you think this was easy, to bring this forth to the people, it wasn't. It's not fun, it's not easy, but it's the right thing to do. Somebody chided me and said, "Well, why didn't you just keep it quiet? Tell that to the employees that are suffering under this circumstance. Tell that to them." Why would we not protect those under our care? We have a legal and moral obligation to do so. Thank you.
We're going to go back to public comment. There's a lady that wants to speak. Let's be transparent. Let's allow her to speak.
Hi, my name is Carla Neal. Thank you for--
Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Could you get that mic a little bit closer, please?
Yes.
Want to be?
Thank you. My name is Carla Neal. I was elected as a school board member in 2014, at the same time that District Attorney David Lynn was elected, and I live in Madera Ranches the last 27 years. Brett Frazier, you are my district supervisor. I did support you in your election, I would not vote for you again. I was recalled on the school board, and a lot of the funding came from developers, and I do feel that there's an element of truth that needs to, the people of this county should be aware of what's happening with the developers, because I do see, and I have seen that you both have taken money from developers, I have looked over in the elections office. So this is an issue that I do feel that the public deserves to know the truth about. My concern is not that at this time, however, based on what has been said, I would like to know, have the complaints of the employees who were in this independent investigation, have they been adjudicated? Have those complaints been taken to an administrative judge or to a jury? Trial court, where those near allegations brought before us today have been determined or ruled to be facts? And why has that not been discussed ahead of the censure topic? So has a court of law or has an administrative judge found this, these allegations to be true? And if not, why are we censuring ahead of that?
Well, let's get on with it. Board action.
I make a motion that we approve the alternate resolution and waive our attorney-client privilege and release a redacted version of the investigation.
Do we have a second?
Second that.
We have a second.
Call for the vote. Supervisor Rogers?
Yes.
Supervisor Poitras?
Yes.
Supervisor Wheeler?
Yes, and it's probably the hardest decision I've had to make since I've been on this board.
Supervisor Frazier?
Yes.
Supervisor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Vote passes, 5-0.
Motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second. We're hereby adjourned.